Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the March 2nd meeting?
I'll move.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And abstentions? Thank you. I will now read through the consent agenda items. Agenda number one, or item number one, a request from George Clayton regarding the vacation of Surphitz Rights of Way adjoining property in the vicinity of 1601 East Grand Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to hear this item on the public hearing agenda? Seeing none, is there any commissioners who would like to hear this item tonight? Okay, that item one will stay on the consent agenda. Item number two, a request from Dunto LLC for review and approval of a major preliminary plat elevate townhomes for property located at 508 Indianola Road for the development of 11-1 household residential lots. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss this item tonight? Seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like to discuss this item? All right. Seeing none, item two will stay on the consent agenda. Item number three, a request from NFC Properties for review of a public hearing site plan and for a type-two design alternative for property located at 801 Shaw Street to allow construction of a new house type C. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss this item tonight? Seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like to discuss this item? Okay. Item three will remain on the consent agenda. Item number four, another request from NFC Properties for review of a public hearing site plan and for a type-two design alternative for property located at 802 Shaw Avenue, or Shaw Street for a construction of a new house type C. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss this item tonight? Seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like to discuss this item? All right. Item number four will remain on consent. Item number five, request from 4021 Properties LLC for review and approval of a public hearing site plan 4019 Ingersoll Avenue Building Improvements for a type-two design alternative to allow existing portion of the building to be one-story in height. Are there any people in the audience who would like to hear this item tonight? Seeing none, or is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item tonight? All right. Item five will remain on the consent agenda. We additionally have three items on the public hearing that can move to consent if there are no objections. I will go through those. Item number seven, a request from Noel Fernandez for the property located at 2021 Clark Street for determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM, to amend Plan DSM, to revise the future land use classification to low-medium-density residential, and to rezone the property from N5 Neighborhood District to N5-2 Neighborhood District. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss this item tonight? Okay. Is there anyone on the commission who would like this to remain on the public hearing? Okay. Item number seven will be moved to the consent agenda. Item number eight, a request from Archer Daniels Midland Company for the following regarding property located at 1935 East Euclid Avenue, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with Plan DSM, to amend the Plan DSM plan to revise the future land use classification from industrial and parks and open space to industrial, and to rezone the property from Flood District to I-2 Industrial District, to all I-2 Industrial District to allow addition to an existing structure and other improvements. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this to remain in the public hearing tonight? Seeing none, are there commissioners who would like this to remain on public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, item eight will move to the consent agenda. Item number nine, a request from the Des Moines Community Playhouse for review and approval of a second amendment to the Des Moines Community Playhouse PUD conceptual plan for property located at 83142nd Street to allow the construction of a 2,700-square-foot building addition with associated utilities, parking, and drives within the PUD. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this item discussed in the public hearing tonight? And seeing none, are there any commissioners who would like this to remain on public hearing tonight? Okay. Seeing none, item number nine will stay, or will move to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion from a commissioner to approve the consent agenda for items one through five and items seven, eight, and nine?
I think traditionally we've had, although it's schematics in a way, but I think since we've traditionally had a motion to move the items onto consent, we could go ahead and first get a motion to move seven, eight, nine to consent, and then a second motion. No worries.
Can I get a motion?
I don't know that it's necessary, but it's what we've traditionally done.
Move items seven, eight, and nine to the consent agenda.
I will move that.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I need to abstain from number nine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
And now we are going to, I'm going to request a motion to approve the entire consent agenda, which is one through five and seven, eight, and nine.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Again, need to abstain from number nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Another note, item number six on the public hearing, there's a request to continue it indefinitely. It is a request from Tam TiVo for the property located at 1515 Forest Avenue. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight who was here for this item? No? Okay. Okay. So if I could get a motion to continue indefinitely, item number six.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. So we will start the public hearing with item number 10, and Bert is the staff member who will present this item.
All right. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Ross, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. Item number 10 is a request to amend the airport crossroads PUD for one of the parcels within that property. There is a Jehovah's Witness Kingdom Hall that is proposed to be constructed there, and they need waiver of two of the existing requirements of that airport crossroads PUD. The subject property is located at 7,700 Flewer Drive. So here's the subject property. It's on the west side of Flewer Drive at the corner with Crossroads Drive for reference. County Line Road is just to the south, just off the bottom of the screen. And this is the PUD that has been on the books since 2001. It has quite a few design standards here that talk about prohibited materials. I'll zoom in on that section. But the PUD prohibits composite hardy board siding, and it prohibits asphalt shingles, which are the two things that the applicant has requested waiver of. So again, here's that section that talks about prohibited building materials, and then right below that talks about prohibited roofing materials. So asphalt shingles is one of the two types of roofing materials that are prohibited. And again, the second building material here, which is composite siding such as hardboard siding, is prohibited. So they're wanting to amend the PUD to waive those two requirements for this parcel. So here's the rest of the PUD. It just gives some typical building designs that would be allowed in the PUD. And then this is their proposed layout for this lot. You can see there, they would extend this frontage road from the dentist office to the north, and they would extend it all the way across the subject site down to Crossroads Drive here. And then there would be the place of worship building constructed here with the off-street parking lot. Here are some elevations that they've provided. The staff recommendation, which I'll get to shortly, does require them to increase the number, the amount of masonry materials, which the applicant has actually agreed with the staff recommendation. I'll just point that out now. But the reason we didn't suggest that we move to consent is we did get one letter in opposition. So we wanted to give that neighbor a fair shake. Again, here's what's being proposed, and as I mentioned, the staff recommendation will require that the amount of brick be increased. Really, the meat of the recommendation is that no more than 40% of any facade can be sited with that hardy board material. And then I'll let the applicant come back to this, but this is the rationale for why they're wanting to have the materials. And then they provided some examples of other buildings in the PUD that they feel this building would be complying with. Here are some site photos. This is looking south from the dentist office property across the subject property. This photo here is looking west from Flewer Drive. And then the last photo is looking north from Crossroads Drive. You can see the dentist office here. And then these two photos are of the dentist office, and it is the dentist who is opposed to this. If you look closely, it looks like asphalt shingles on the roof, but it's actually metal material that was built or designed to look like asphalt shingles. So when the dentist built this building, they did comply with the PUD, and they provided the metal roof as required. Here's another view. So as I mentioned in our staff recommendation, we did recommend approval of the amendment. We just recommended that these conditions apply. The first be that the amendment really only applies to that parcel at 7,700 Flewer Drive and only so long as it's used for a place of worship. So say this proposed use doesn't happen, and they sell the property to another entity, the only way they could take advantage of these conditions is if it's another place of worship that goes onto that property. But anyway, our conditions are, one, that any roof shingle must be laminated architectural type shingle. We felt that that would in fact be compatible with the other uses in proximity. We've said that the masonry base around the perimeter of the building needs to be at least two feet of height to the satisfaction of the Planning and Urban Design Administrator. We said the composite siding can only be used as a minor material with no more than 40% of any facade being sited with that composite material. And then we said the balance of the building needs to be sited with masonry material as reviewed and approved by the Planning and Urban Design Administrator. And then condition number two is that all of the other PUD standards will apply. So here's the consent map again. We had just that one letter from the property immediately to the north, and here's that letter. I'll leave it up here and let you read it. Well, does anybody have any questions for me?
Bert, is the applicant, do they agree with all the recommendations?
They do. And when you read the letter from the neighbor, staff feels that all of the neighbor's concerns would be addressed by our recommendation except for the asphalt shingles part where we have recommended in support of the asphalt shingles, but the neighbor, I guess, would prefer it be a metal roof.
In the PUD drawing that you had on the screen, it said that there's an architectural review, or at the time, there was an architectural review committee. Does that committee still exist?
I believe it does, but that's not something that city staff regulates or monitors. We leave it up to the developer, it's in the PUDs.
And then that's at the direction of legal department. We've looked at that.
Bert, I have.
Go ahead.
So the, because I'm not good at math, are the renderings, are they more than 40% siding, or are they showing with, in compliance with?
No, the drawings that they submitted do not show, do not comply with the staff recommendation, but they have, the applicant has indicated they would revise the drawings to comply with the staff recommendation.
To have more of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And will there be sidewalk added?
I believe they have to add it on floor and on crossroads.
Okay.
Which, that would be shown on the future PUD development site plan. This is just the PUD conceptual plan.
Okay, because there's not sidewalk in front of the other one.
Right.
Okay.
But that would be required.
Okay. And then the other one that you listed, the oral surgeon, I think that's further up, are they in compliance with the PUD?
Um, it's funny you ask. We looked into it, and we found back in 2006, they had requested a waiver of the PUD to get out of doing asphalt shingles, and that waiver was denied. So we're having to have the zoning enforcement staff look into it and see. It could be where they put on another roof, like a metal roof at the time, and then since 2006 have replaced it with asphalt shingles, or they just went ahead and did it, and it's been missed for, what would it be, 17 years?
Yeah. So is, I'm not a roof.
Yeah.
So is metal better? Why would metal?
It just, when this was developed, it was intended to be a business park with like warehousing and with the, you know, what do they call it, the flex warehouse space.
I see.
More of a, more of a commercial, business park feel.
Yeah, just west of there, right? It is all the warehouse. Is it west of the direction?
Yeah. It's just, the airport commerce park south PUD is north and west of this PUD.
That's warehouse.
Right. Right.
And metal's cheaper or more expensive than?
I think you could probably find a product that's cheaper, but there are, like, the dentist office that I showed you a photo of, that metal roof is really expensive. So it would be a lot more expensive than.
Oh, okay. And we don't have any issues with the orientation of the building not to the front, to the main?
No. Unfortunately, the PUD that was developed in 2001 didn't put any standards in the PUD. So there's really no teeth that we have to require that.
We did have discussions with them, I think, early in the process, and they can speak to that.
Okay.
I think they, we encouraged that. I think they cited maybe some grade concerns, but as Bert has noted, with it being zoned PUD, the downside of those, of that is that we are somewhat limited by the notions and standards that were adopted maybe 20 years ago as things change.
Commissioners have any more questions for Bert? Okay. Thank you. The applicant may now speak for 10 minutes if they would so. The applicant here?
Yeah, we, I represent the owner, but we also have a client on the bench. It's architecture speaking today. Well, I think. What's that?
Yeah.
Your architects aren't here? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you might, you might go and answer any questions we have, and if not, you can.
Sure.
So as far as the.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Velez, and my, my address, is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
516 Northwest 63rd Place in Des Moines. So as far as the variances that were being asked for, I think they were all stated accurately, and we're all in agreement. Were there any questions for those?
Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I'll ask, I'm, I'm not sure that, I noticed in your parking summary, you didn't list any bike parking, and it seems to be an overparked space. Could you address that?
Yeah, there is, there is arrangements for bike parking. I know that our civil engineer will be submitting those drawings soon.
Okay.
Yeah, so those, that has all been addressed.
Okay. Are you planning to overpark it like these original drawings show?
No, I don't believe so.
So you're going to reduce the amount of parking?
Can you say that again?
Are you going to reduce the amount of parking?
Well, that, that's something we'll have to have our civil engineer, civil designer address. I don't have that information right now. Andy, I'm sorry.
Will you share the main entrance off a floor with the pediatric dentist and oral surgeon, or will another curb cut be created to get to your site?
As I understand, that there's an easement in place that we actually have incorporated into the design, and that's part of the reason for the orientation of the prop, of the, of the building on the site because of that easement, that driveway, which was established by the oral surgeon, and we're just gonna, we pull off of that.
So that's yes, you'll use the one end exit and entrance off a floor?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Or any more questions? Thank you. If you could, there's a piece of paper there at the table. If you could sign in at the end of that table right there?
Sure.
If you could sign in. Oh, you had something more to say?
Yeah, now, there was a, there was another question. I don't think we got it in to this discussion here about the 12% transparency in the front of the building, and maybe it might have to be held for another.
Yeah, I, I think we were sorting that out at the staff level. I don't remember that being something that was going to be part of the PUD amendment process. So we can follow up with you on that.
Okay, great. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yep, right there.
Thank you so much. Okay. If there are any, anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak in support of this item, you can come forward now. Okay. Are there any, anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this item? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that. Um, do commissioners have any more questions for the staff on this? I'll move staff. Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor to move staff, raise your right hand. Okay. All those opposed?
Yeah, passy.
Okay.
Motion carries.
Did you vote? Okay. Okay. All right. We are moving on to item number 11, request from RLC Legacy for review and approval of 7.12 acres of property in the vicinity of 4580 Hubble Avenue. Hi. Nick will present tonight for staff.
Thanks. Madam Chair, members of the commission, oh. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpe, planning staff. So you'll see here, there's a couple of things that are struck out, so I'll explain that real quick. At least initially, the applicant, they were proposing to do a subdivision, so divide the property into different parcels of land. They rescinded that request. They took it out. They don't want to do that anymore. So part A doesn't apply. We're not going to talk about that tonight. And then in part B3, the applicant and staff, we basically, we've come to an agreement on that. The applicant has taken back that request. That's not something that the commission will be reviewing tonight. So we're looking at letter B and then items one and two. So there's a couple of different items in there. One of them really has to do with the building siding, the placement, the site layout, and the other one is much more specific to the building. So I'll try to tailor my presentation and chop it up, so we'll really talk about it in two separate parts, basically. So here's the context, or here's an aerial of the site. So it's, as you can see, it's a relatively large site. It's about seven acres on the Hubble Avenue corridor. It sits about a half mile southwest of the Hubble and US 65 interchange, if you can visualize that. So kind of the northeast quadrant of the city, close to Altoona, at the intersection of Hubble and East 46th Street. The applicant is really proposing to do most of their development kind of in this area. If you can follow my cursor, and really leave the corner area untouched for now. So here's some photos of the site. These were taken yesterday. This is on East 46th Street, looking southwest into the site, so peering into it that way. And then here's another view. This is taken from the corner of East 46th and Hubble. So as you can see now, it's a vacant tract of land. There's nothing there. So the applicant would basically be starting from scratch in that regard. So digging into the site plan here, just want to show the layout. So this, this site plan that we're looking at here, it does show the old land subdivision that was proposed, so you can ignore that. This is all in one parcel. They're proposing about a 7,500-square-foot building that would be used as a church, as well as an event center. So think, things like weddings and birthday parties and things like that, that would be hosted there, and then a parking area out front. And I'll just walk through some different views of the site. We can come back to them. So here's the building. So just showing you some of the, the building elevations here. There's a mix of facade materials that are proposed, brick and nietzsche-ha in the front facade with some, some brick and nietzsche-ha also proposing to wrap. The rest of the building would be sited with a 24-gauge metal panel that would be the same, that would be utilized on the roof. So one of the things that the applicant is requesting relief from tonight is the use of a exposed fastener roof type. So in chapter, yeah, chapter 135, Article 4, City Code, there's a requirement for, if you're going to be using a metal roof, and I know we were just talking about that with the last presentation, it has to be what's called a standing seam metal roof. Really, that's a fancy way of saying that any fasteners to attach the roof to the building, they're concealed or they're hidden, so they're not exposed. So really, the big point of that, or the real benefit of that, is it really provides a lot more durability for the roof. It's a little bit more expensive to install, but those fasteners aren't, they're not exposed to the elements. There's less penetrations in the roof, so less chances for water, the kitchen, things like that. So that's really the impetus behind that requirement in the code. And so as you can see here, they're proposing to side the side of the building with the same metal material that they're, that they're using on the roof. So I just wanted to explain that real quick. So digging into the staff report here, the, the two elements of relief, the first one, again, more of a layout site item. So per the building type, it's a civic building type, assembly type use, church type use. They're not allowed to locate parking in front of the building. As you can see, there was a pretty expansive parking lot there in the front. As staff, we offered sort of a hybrid recommendation. So one thing that we wanted to point back to, this site, it probably looks a little bit familiar because the commission saw it actually back in August of 2022. That was for rezoning. So the site was previously in a PUD that allowed some industrial uses. They actually rezoned out of the PUD to allow this use, and so that was that, the zoning action, and now we're, we're here to the site plan portion of that today. So just to give you a timeline. At that time of the, of the rezoning, and even before, in the, in the pre-application meeting and discussions with staff, it wasn't really hardened fast or set in stone, but there was really an idea that the church building would be constructed, they could potentially be proposing some land subdivisions, and really, there could be future buildings placed elsewhere on the site, either by the applicant, or they could parcel it off and sell it to basically other developers. And so the site could maybe be developed a little bit more densely and intensely over time. With the site plans submitted, that has changed. So I want to walk through something here and show us, show some visuals that show that. So this is the exhibit that was shown to staff during the initial conversations about a year ago during the pre-application meeting, when they came to staff and said, okay, this is what we want to do. How do we accomplish that? What do we do for that? And so this is what was shown to staff during those initial preliminary meetings, and as you can see, we got a building that's set a little bit further back from the street. We have a little bit of a smaller parking area, and we have a lot more space in between the edge of the parking area and the right-of-way here, about 268 feet, which is ample room if they ever wanted to build another building there, or if they wanted to parcel it off and sell it to somebody else for future site development. And then moving on, so this is what was presented during the rezoning phase, so back in August. This is what the commission saw during their presentation then. And so similar layout, building scooch maybe a little bit closer, parking lot has expanded a little bit, but there's still over 200 feet there between the edge of the parking area and then the right-of-way. And so still, ample opportunity to maybe parcel that off in the future, sell it to somebody else, we get some more development in there, and develop the site a little bit more densely. Now, going back to what they have submitted for the site plan, there's about 70 feet in between the edge of the parking area and the right-of-way. And as staff, we looked at this, and, you know, if this site fully develops at full buildout, that really locks in that land use, and there's not really going to be another opportunity to stick a building there or develop a site in a more intense way. And as staff, we understand, you know, this might be more auto-dominated context of the city. It's a, it's a vacant site now. It's a large site, but we still felt that with the site development, with a large site like this, the site should be developed in a little bit more of an efficient manner. And that's not, that's something that's necessarily an opinion of staff, that's something that's actually followed. that's actually followed through in Plan DSM. So in some of our land use goals, you know, there's, there's basically provisions in there that outline smart growth goals and outline using, using existing infrastructure and not, you know, sprawling and kind of over-expanding to new greenfield sites, and so trying to take advantage of the existing sites that we have. And so that was the impetus behind the staff recommendation there. So as staff, thinking about all of that, all those things, I know I was rambling a little bit, but as staff, our recommendation really boils down to, we don't really have an issue with parking being provided inside or in front of the building. We understand how the applicant is gonna use the site, we understand it's a unique user, they're gonna have some different events and things like that. It was really unfeasible for them to maybe place the parking behind the building, it really kind of messes up some of the synergies of the site and how they were proposing to use it. But we do feel like the site development, the future site development should hearken back to what staff was showing about a year ago, and then also during the rezoning phase. We really don't want to see the site be fully developed, fully built out, and really locked in a development pattern with a huge expansive parking in the front and no chance to really densify or add new buildings in the front there. And we don't have a timeline on that, but we're just trying to plan future horizons decades from now. We want to make sure that we develop in a way where we can add buildings, add density, and not really, like I said before, lock in a large parking lot on a really large parcel. So our recommendation for Part 1 of the design alternatives that were requested, where we support the request on the condition that they leave at least 150 feet between the edge of the parking and the existing right-of-way for future site development, so a new building could be placed there, we felt that that was realistic. And then the design alternative related to the building, again, like I was talking about a little bit earlier, was related to the use of that exposed fastener roof. And so like I walked through a little bit before, the code requires a standing seam roof, and really, the point of that, it's not necessarily aesthetic, although that is something that does come along with that, there is a lot more durability with that, it's a little bit more structurally sound, and so that's the reason that staff is issuing that recommendation to deny the use of an exposed fastener-type roof and recommend that the applicant use a standing seam metal roof or a different roof type. So that is my presentation, we did not get any comments or anything about it, but I will be happy to take any questions. And I can show material details that the applicant has submitted as well.
Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? Go ahead, Carol.
Hello. Why was staff comfortable with parking along 46th Street, which is across from a purely residential use?
So in front, in front of the building? So as staff, we would have been okay with parking in front of the building, provided that it, we have that setback, you know, so it's not 70 feet from the right-of-way, but there's at least 150-foot setback there to allow a future building, future site development there in the future.
Yeah, so I think if I could just add on to that, I think the premise of our recommendation is that, that by having that setback a little bit further, it allows the opportunity for a building to be constructed in the future, which is what we saw at the rezoning stage, that would actually block that parking or shield that parking?
Right.
And create a development pattern that's both more dense, but also achieve the goals of what we're trying to do with parking, which is to have it more on the sides and the rear.
Right. So, so it couldn't go behind the building because why?
Yeah, there's a couple of reasons for that. I think one, with the way that the site slopes, their stormwater management facility is gonna be back there, and then also thinking about how the site is laid out and designed and just the existing nature of the site, the way that they wanted to site the building really takes advantage of the topography of the site, as well as the tree canopy that's back there, and so they wanted to place the building back there, it's a religious assembly building, event assembly type building, and so they kind of wanted to nestle it back there in more of a bucolic setting. And so taking advantage of that, having outdoor vents in the back there, you know, that would take precedence over sighting the parking back there.
If you go to Slide 2 and just show the aerial, I think that will help kind of illustrate.
And that's not Four Mile Creek back there, is it?
No. It's, it's a tributary, so it's not the actual creek, but it is a stream that eventually flows into it.
And doesn't flood, hopefully?
No.
Like Four Mile Creek?
Go to sheet four, heard.
Okay.
Sheet, uh, four.
I'm sorry, two, two, I got sidetracked there. Four more.
And that house at the corner of 46th and Broadway, that's shown right there, that'll remain?
Correct, that's not part of this property, correct.
Okay. And the entrance will be then, everyone will drive down 46th Street?
Correct.
And required parking was 50, and they're going to put in 125?
That's correct, yes.
Two and a, two and a quarter times?
Correct.
Did you have any concerns with that?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've told the applicant that, we've communicated that, but we don't have a parking maximum necessarily, it's not something that, as staff, we can say you can't have that much parking.
Yeah, this, this district doesn't have a parking maximum.
But they'll be required to have the appropriate landscaping to support?
Correct, yeah, and I can show the landscaping plan too.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to know.
Are there any more questions from commissioners for staff? Okay. Thank you, Nick. The applicant is here, they now have 10 minutes to do a presentation.
I, Robert Kramer, 1715 FIG in Adel, and we're the developer of the project. My wife and I bought this very unique property, and as you recall, we were back here last year doing the rezoning. So our vision is that we, we already donated this property to a nonprofit, and this nonprofit's gonna build this event center to use for a church, and then also do weddings and that kind of thing. I think it's probably one of the few uses that maybe could go on this property, because of that unique triangle shape is probably why it hasn't sold for quite a while. And as Nick pointed out, by the way, city staff has been very good to work with, and Nick's been very good, we're trying to kind of nestle that event center back in there, try to get some seclusion, take advantage of the trees that are around it, and get away from, you know, so it wouldn't bother the neighbors, would also maybe allow outdoor wedding. And so I wanted to show you the kind of progression that we've, we've made. I should ask Nick to turn this thing on. And one other thing, Nick, let's first talk about the roofing material. We have already just changed our mind, we will spend the extra money, it's about $30, $40,000, and go to a standing seam roof. So we can, we're in, we're in agreement with city on that. We'll do a standing seam roof, we've already kind of made the change on the siting stuff, so we're in agreement on that. So really, we're down to, the only disagreement would be this parking issue. Where we start, this is where we started, and you can see, we kind of have the building in the trees, we also had kind of a play area here within the trees, and then our detention was in the trees. So it was gonna be a very large tree removal process. One of the things I thought I heard from the city was, you like trees, don't want to really get rid of trees, we really kind of like to have the trees, to have the protection from the neighbors, and I assume the neighbors do too, and there's that tree mitigation we would have to do if we cleared out all the trees. So then we went to the next one, we moved the, the building kind of out of the trees, and this was our next variation. So we moved the, the building out of the trees, but our detention area still would require some clearing, and we decided to make a change and go instead to a, a dry detention pond that would be wet most of the time, it'd be kind of reeds and kind of ugly. We decided to go to a full-blown pond, retention pond, so that it'd be a nice feature, and we'd have a little trail around it, and, and for, you know, for outdoor weddings would be nice, a little site. So, so that moved us even a little bit more out of the trees, out of the woods. And that's when we started to move towards the street. And to be honest with you, I wasn't really picking up on the fact that the city really wanted to preserve the ability, I thought it was just really for my own benefit, if I wanted to put a building in that corner, so I wasn't really thinking that we would get shot down for any of this. We, we did this variation, but then, on the north side of that building is gonna, and I'll show you a rendering here in a second, so there's gonna be a canopy and then a, like 12- or 16-foot patio, and what I envision is, sometimes we'd go to a wedding, it might be a wedding inside the building, you go outside and have a reception out on the patio while they flip the room, you know, flip it to round tables and have a reception. Well, when they're having that nice reception out there, I didn't want them to come outside and look at cars, you know? So then I went to this next variation, which was what you've, what has been proposed, and we slid the parking lot then out to the edge of the building. So there's a nice green space here, where when they have a reception out here, they see this green space, it can also be used, 'cause pond over here have a flat area, and we can have outdoor weddings anywhere in this area, and, and take advantage of it. So all those steps kept moving that parking farther to the east, and yes, we're left with 70 feet, which is not very usable for a building. We are still planning on selling off this acre and a half here, which has the frontage on Hubble, and so there will be a retail, some sort of retail use. We pulled that from the agenda just to, I was getting a little, trying to figure out a way of having some sort of signage maybe for our building, you know, up here, and I found out that you have to, the land has to be contiguous, and so I'm trying to work through all that, but, but still, our intent would be to, to sell this piece. But, yeah, you know, if someone wanted to put a building here in the future, they could always tear out some parking lot, but I guess our feeling is that we're getting a little, maybe, I, in our opinion, the city's kind of overstepping what we want to do with the land. We want to take advantage of more green space, more trees, and yes, that means we can't sell a lot on the east side, but, you know, this is what we think is a good use for this property. We think it's, we're taking a vacant piece, it's a very strange piece of property, and putting a good use to it, and we're gonna sell off an acre and a half that'll have a business, so we think we're bringing value to the city and to the neighbors, and we think that, so I would ask that you maybe override staff's recommendation and allow us to do it as proposed. Here's the rendering of kind of what it's gonna look like then when it's done. So we think it's a very nice-looking building, and there still will be a buffer between the, the streets, and we'll have landscaping along that 46th Street, so that, you know, keeping headlights and stuff from shining into the neighbors. And we have landscaping buffer on the north side for the same purpose, to kind of keep, keep the nuisance away from neighbors. So we feel like this, we have a good plan here, and it's a good use of the site, and so we would ask that PNC would maybe approve it as, as submitted.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicant?
Is the sanitary line or easement that's shown along the road, is that already in place, or is that something that's coming in as part of this project?
Let's see, I think, we'd have to add an easement, is it part of the? Yeah, it'll be a new easement, because we have to extend that sewer up to the north edge of our property, and so we will be, I guess, coming with an easement, go with it.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, could you put up the, the slide you just, the last one, please, with the landscaping? I have a question about this, a couple of questions. So the shorter of the trees, are those, talk about, I guess my real question is, talk about the landscaping as it is now, because it looks like it's rather dense in terms of density and height, and then talk about the change that one sees here in the rendering.
Yeah, you know, this is a engineer taking the picture and trying to draw in trees. The, the real look, in fact, we can maybe switch back to the computer. That's what it really looks like, and that's, and those aren't, and for the most part, we're not touching those trees. So that's what it looks like in the triangle. And, and then there's the landscaping plan, so the landscaping we're adding is mostly up there in that northeast corner, and then along 46th Street, yeah, there, but, but the existing trees are pretty well staying.
So what you're proposing is the, along the, sort of the eastern side of the lot, and you don't think that you're going to be removing any of the trees in the V-shaped area, is that correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Why do you need two and a quarter times the amount of parking?
Yeah, the capacity for the meeting space would be 300 to 400. For a, at round tables, it would be like 280. So we think could be weddings, it's always hard to tell at church, who knows how big church is gonna get, but on weddings, I would guess at most, in fact, we found out the average wedding in Iowa was like 110, but could be as big as 280 for, that's how many you could see for, you know, round tables, reception. So, you know, we have 110 or 117 spots, you know, for 280, we think is about right. So I'm not totally sure, I suppose the 50 that staff mentioned, I assume just came from square footage, is that just some of the rural, you know, purse, you know?
It's per seats, so it's one per six seats.
So.
So that seems so far off, why? It's, is our requirement that much lower, or, I mean?
Yeah, I think what Nick was saying is our requirement's one parking space per six seats, and I think what you're hearing is the applicant is shooting more for like, one for, one stall for two seats or three seats.
One car for two and a half people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you have a meeting with the neighborhood?
Yes. Uh, well, back during the zoning process. So we have not done with the site plan.
You don't need to, okay.
But we did back then.
And did they have a concern of you entering off of 46th Street to get to this, your site?
No, we didn't hear anything of, we'd love to be off of Hubble, but I assume city would never allow us to be that close to an intersection, you know, to have another entrance. So we, yeah, so it's always been, it's always been shown to the neighbors as being off of 46th Street.
With Hubble being a state highway, there's gonna be limited access to it, so I'd...
Okay. All right, thank you. If you could sign in on the sheet there, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience here tonight who would like to speak in support of this item? Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this item? Okay. Anyone who'd like to speak from a neutral standpoint? Okay. All right. I will close the public hearing and throw it over to commissioners for discussion.
I have a quick question. So the applicant said that he was okay with?
Item number two.
Items 1 and 2?
Not one.
Oh, wait, no, that's parking.
Yeah, all we're, the only thing that's on...
Oh, okay.
Under consideration is B 1.
Got you, all right. So the only thing we're calling to question now is just directly 1?
In regards to the parking?
Okay.
Yep.
And there's no requirements, extra requirements on the parking as far as robust scrutiny or anything, it's just?
I mean, they have to comply with their landscaping standards that apply to any parking, that, Nick, does this, is this compliant?
So what they have depicted now doesn't have the full, like, parking lot buffer, we would say, with like an ornamental fence, shrubs, grasses, and trees, that would be something that, as an administrative comment, we would make them do that, to screen, if, for parking in front, to screen the parking, we would do that.
And are we approving them at 70 feet?
Yeah, the only thing is before the commission tonight is really that setback, having the parking out in front of the building, really.
Really?
Right.
Not the 70 feet, just where it may be located?
It's specifically to allow a surface parking lot in a front yard? When it's only permitted in a rear or limited side yard.
And as staff, we had recommended approval, but we were wanting to have that with the understanding that there might be a building built in front of it down the road, so that means leave and allow.
So are we voting on the 150 requirement?
Yeah, I mean, what's really before you, the applicant's asked you to waive the, the requirement that doesn't allow parking in the front yard of this building type in the zoning district.
The staff recommendation was to have it be back 150 feet?
From the street?
From the street.
To approve it with that condition, basically.
Yeah.
And it's, how far back is it right now, again?
70 feet.
70 feet.
As proposed, what you saw tonight, 70 feet.
Yeah, I mean, really, I mean, the commission has what the applicant's proposed, what staff has proposed, and then you also obviously could say no to the whole thing.
What, what, what does he lose if we do what you guys recommend? What's like the, I just want to know the ratios of parking?
It's, um, well, probably one, one row, right? I mean, really... I mean, really.
At least, at least a row, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's, it's 80 feet, so it'd be like two, double row with the center aisle.
Right.
I think they would probably want to relook. I, I think, if I could boil it down to what the applicant said, is what they lose is having that lawn in that area to the north of the building.
Yeah, I think generally, they just have to revise the site layout. There's not necessarily hard and fast. They would lose this, they would lose that. It's, they'd have to revise the site to shift things around to make sure the edge of the parking is no closer than 150 feet to the property line on East 46th.
And because this doesn't include subdividing the lot into two lots, they could potentially still use some of that sort of corner area, is that correct?
That is, that is correct, yeah. They're not proposing any structures or anything there right now. Yeah, it would, it would all be on a contiguous, the same parcel.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good point, because if they expanded parking into there, there could be more shared use for like the, you know, overage of park, like the beyond code level parking that we're providing, or they're providing here. So, Nick, if they didn't have this waiver, they would need to build the building toward the street. Is there a bill to?
No, so that's a good point. So, with this building type, there's actually a 25-foot setback here. There's not a bill to.
Thanks.
So, that's why that, that was not considered in the relief.
Yeah, very good.
Would you be okay if I made one more comment?
Uh, sure, a quick one. I have closed the public hearing, but just really quick.
Okay, Robert Kramer again. To answer that question, the, what it does to us is it really hinders us on an outdoor wedding. So, if we tried to ship that back to where it was and, and get to 150 feet, we're kind of losing our green space there. And one of the things when we were studying all the different venues in Des Moines, we think we'd be the only venue that can do both an indoor and outdoor that's in the city limits of Des Moines. So, you see a lot of barns out in rural Iowa or whatever, but in Des Moines, it's very limited. So, this is one of our big selling points. So, we really, we're trying to maximize that park-like feel around, around the building. Thanks.
I have a question, and I want to expand on Dan's point. So, right now, the property is not going to be subdivided. So, they still have access to the entire property, meaning that if we go with the staff recommendation, they would have to comply with 150. We will approve the parking.
In front of the building.
In front of the building. But they can accommodate some additional parking south of the building, which is not an issue, should not be an issue because of everything that's proposed north of the building. I think this will give us an opportunity to potentially have some sort of shared parking agreement with the future property being developed. I heard it was potentially retail that was being proposed?
That was, oh, are you saying on the, on the corner property?
On the corner, yeah.
I don't think that there was anything hard and fast that was necessarily proposed at that time. I mean, I think that was maybe the idea because you're on Hubble.
It's commercial. It's currently MX3, right?
Yeah, it's MX3.
It will remain MX3.
So, any use in MX3, correct?
Thanks.
Any further questions or discussions, or do we have a motion?
This one's kind of tough.
Oh.
Uh.
Yeah.
Because you would lose the usage of that back area, that back space. If that's what they're designing it to be, a dual-usage spot, that's my only concern.
I'll make a motion. I think, I mean, I'll move staff with the idea that we should, or this is an opportunity with staff's recommendation, to basically push the sta, push the site to create a shared use parking solution. A retail solution down the road would probably use, you know, off-hour parking compared to this use. So, I think it's really the right way to go. We should just put, put the pressure back on the applicant and the design team to solve this condition. So, I'll move staff.
Okay. If there's no further discussion on the motion?
So, we're moving to approve the waiver.
Approve staff, which is?
With stipulations for them to work on the design.
So, the staff recommends approval of the public hearing site plan and the design alternative, sorry, we've had some things withdrawn, so I'm just trying to get this.
This first paragraph applies.
Okay. Subject to compliance with all administrative review comments and on the condition that any parking areas are set back at least 150 feet from East 46th Street right-of-way. That is what the motion is for. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed, raise your right hand. Okay. Oh, is Chris, Chris Draper, are you online?
In favor.
Okay, thank you.
Motion.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to item number 12, a request from February 30th Properties LLC for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, South Des Moines Vet Center, for Type II design alternatives for a property located in the vicinity of 601 Army Post Road. We have Nick from staff presenting it.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpe, planning staff. So, as you can see here, there's a lot of design alternatives. Just to put it out there right away, parts A through G, staff and the applicant are in agreeance on. I'm not really going to touch those at all. I'll walk through what's proposed. If there's any questions on any of those, I'm happy to answer them. But those are all something that staff and the applicant agree on. There's a, there's a favorable staff recommendation to all of those. It's part H here on page two for the trash enclosure, specifically the materiality, as well as some of the design of that. That is what is up for debate tonight. So, we'll stick on that. So, this site's the corner of Southwest 6th and Army Post. It's about 1,000 feet east or so of the intersection with Southwest 9th and Army Post, if people are kind of familiar with that node, with that area. And then, here's some existing photos. So, these were taken yesterday. This is a shot from the south side of Army Post, looking to the north. And then, here's a shot from the north, just looking to the south. So, this is the intersection of Southwest 6th Street and Lally Street. So, digging into the site plan here, just to show you the site design, here's the building that's proposed. It's going to be situated relatively close to the corner here. And then, the dog run area, that would be basically attached. So, this is a fenced-in area for dogs and other animals to play in, to get exercise in. Parking area behind, detention area that's situated here at the corner. So, just some other views of the site, showing some landscaping. So, here's the building. It's a pretty varied building. It's got some different architectural features as well as materials, pretty unique design, I think, that would be coming to this area. So, I'll just scroll through these. If you've got any questions, feel free to stop me. Here's some renderings as well. So, the thing that I wanted to really point out, and I'll probably pull up another item here. So, like I said before, staff, we're in support of the request to design alternatives in parts A through G. The applicant has, has agreed to the, the conditions in those if, if they were applicable. The big thing is the trash enclosure. So, the applicant is proposing a composite wood siding to use for the actual trash enclosure, as well as the gates. So, per code, especially with the new construction, the requirement would be some sort of masonry enclosure that would match what's on the building, as well as metal gates that are at least 18-gauge. And then, the enclosure would be designed in a way that there'd be a pedestrian entrance. So, somebody that would be taking out the trash wouldn't have to open the big gates and then throw the trash in there. They would be able to kind of go through a little side door or something like that. That would allow for easier access to the trash enclosure. And really, this is, again, this is not really necessarily an aesthetic thing from staff. Really, we have found consultations with zoning enforcement staff through the years that these masonry enclosures, they really hold up a lot stronger than, than anything that's wood or even a composite wood. And so, really, it's a lot longer lasting in that regard. Same thing with using the metal gates as opposed to the, the wood composite gates. The pedestrian entrance is important because it really allows people to access the trash enclosure without really compromising the visibility of the insides, both to people within the property and then people outside of the property too. Because we know those trash enclosure areas, they can sometimes get messy. And so, it really, having a pedestrian entrance really heightens the chance of concealing a lot of that. And so, that's the rationale or the recommendation behind that feeling from staff. So, just to summarize in conclusion, as staff, we recommend the design alternatives, parts A through G, and then denial of part H, which is that trash enclosure. And then, I also want to pull up a materiality detail. I think I got it. So, the applicant can speak more to this, but it's, the product is called New Tech Wood. And so, this is what would be used on the trash enclosure, both for the actual enclosure itself, but then also for the gates. And really, the, the rationale for the applicant is that that would match some of the aesthetics of the building. And so, they, really, from an architectural standpoint, they really like that congruence and that flow. And so, I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about that. Does anybody have any questions about any of that?
Nick, can you just go back to the site plan and point out where the trash enclosure is?
Yeah, thank you. Good question. So, trash enclosure's in a pretty typical spot. So, we got the building here, the dog run here, and it's located relatively adjacent to the building here, north of it.
Does Gem Street get torn out?
The, so the, the private street that went through there, is that what you're asking about?
Well, it's called Gem Street on.
On Google Maps?
Yeah, it talks to, and it says it's Gem Street. And when I was parked on it, people were driving through it like it was a street.
Sure.
So, I was just curious.
Yeah, the plan for the applicant, so, right now, the plan for the applicant is that it's kind of a weird L-shaped parcel. They're proposing to subdivide it. And so, the part where this building would be built on, yeah, it would be demoed and torn out, yes.
So, it would, people couldn't use it as a cut-through?
No, correct, that's correct.
And the concrete that's already there on the part they're not developing will remain?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, the site was occupied until probably about five years ago as a mobile home park. It's been cleared of that for about the last five years. So, it's been vacant since then.
Can you show the facade again?
Yeah.
That shows?
Of the?
Of the building?
The building, yeah.
Of the building that shows the materials being used. Okay.
So, we can look at this one, and then we can go like a elevation by elevation, too. You can take a look at that. So, it's, like I said, it's, it's a, it's a real mix. So, brick, some stucco, some of that, some cementitious kind of siding, so similar to like a hardy plank, some stone. So, the applicant has done, in responding to some of the requirements of chapter 135, they've done a pretty good job of responding to breaking up the different facades, providing some different fenestration with a, a longer building that's proposed. That's why that this is shown like this.
So, to have the trash enclosure be a material that staff would be in favor of and to match some part of the building, do you think it would be most likely brick?
Correct, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Brick and metal panel?
I'm sorry.
Brick and the metal on the door, on the doors?
Yeah, it would be 18-gauge.
That's what you guys would want?
Yes, correct.
And those materials are present on the building?
Correct.
Generally speaking.
Yes, generally, yes.
The rest, the rest of the materials on the building are all in compliance?
Yeah.
The front doors don't need to face streets for here?
So, you talking about right here?
Yeah, the primary entry, sorry, doesn't need to face the street in this zone?
No, it does.
Otherwise, they're okay?
Yeah, no, so these are, these are both principal entrances, so they do face the street. The building, so something that, I'll go back to.
Or they can have parking in front of the building, I guess, in the zone, is okay?
So.
No, they had it, it's behind it, actually.
Yeah, so here, I'll, I'll pull some up here. So, here's the, here's the parcel. You can see, this is the property line here. So, typically, with most parcels, most sites, the property line would go pretty much all the way up to the sidewalk here. This is actually city right-of-way, so there's a lot of utilities in here. And so, the actual parcel that they're able to develop on is actually, actually really far setback from the street. It's about 40 feet from the back of the sidewalk.
Got it.
Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. They do have the, the code-compliant amount of entrances, and they're both public entrances on that south facade.
Nick, can you show the material for the dumpster enclosure?
Yes.
It's the horizontal brown stuff, is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Nick, is that material being used on the building as well?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Is there, and there is brick on the building too?
Yeah. Yeah, I can go back to the elevations, sorry.
And while you're looking at that, based on the current location of the dumpster enclosure, it's not going to be visible from Army Post, but it will be visible from the side street, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Just from the staff respect, we've, in general, even under the previous code, the, the notion of using Trex, we've saved that for when people are doing redevelopment, you have an existing site, maybe you're only doing site improvements as a, as kind of an alternative. We've been fairly consistent with new construction, new development to require the masonry walls. And so, that's really why, you know, that's not really why, I think all the reasons that Nick has outlined for durability and stuff is really why. But that's part of the why we are recommending that that be done here, was just to be consistent with how we've been treating other development.
Is there any site constraint that's not allowing for the pedestrian or the, you know, mandor entry that you, that you talked about?
Sorry, say that again.
You were talking about the other thing they're not providing and asking for relief on is to have a mandor.
Oh, yeah.
Access.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is there a constraint they're citing?
Any constraints to their site?
Is there a constraint that they are citing?
Oh, no, that has not been cited to me, no.
Okay.
If the, the applicant might have one tonight, but we have not discussed that, no.
Okay.
Yep. All right. There's no further questions from commissioners, the applicant can come forward. 10 minutes to do a presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, city staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this night to present this project. Thank you, Nick, for the summary of kind of where we're at tonight. Like Nick stated, what we're intending to do is provide a composite-type siding on this trash enclosure. We don't have any disagreements about adding a pedestrian door. We understand the, the points behind that. I think Nick told me I can run through this real quick. So, I'm going to jump down this slide presentation to one of the rendering pages to give you an idea. It doesn't actually show up in one of these renderings. How do I get down here? Now, I suppose I should state, my name's Corey Sharp. I'm an architect in principle with FEH Design. I'd be the architect of record for this project. Our office is located at 604 East Grand Avenue. So, in this lower image here, what you see off to the right side here is the dog run. The dog run and the concealment or fencing around the dog run is this same composite material. It would be the same height as the trash enclosure. It's directly adjacent to the trash enclosure. And so, mainly for that reason, that's, that's why we're trying to use this same material, just because of its location to the materials that are closest to it. The owner also has a bit more comfort with the ability to repair a dumpster enclosure that's made out of a composite material in lieu of a masonry one. I'll pull up in the site plan a little bit so you can see kind of the relationship of the trash enclosure to the dog run. So, you can see the dog run just outside the building here, and the trash enclosure is sort of immediately adjacent to it. So, just because of the relationship of those pieces, we felt it was appropriate that the materials would match. The material's essentially really similar to a composite deck material you might find on a sort of residential deck product, but used in a, a commercial manner. Would be installing this trash enclosure with a solid steel frame, it'd be cast in concrete. We feel it would be more than equally durable to a, a masonry-type trash enclosure, but we understand the city's historical perspective on this topic. Would be happy to answer any questions you might have on this.
And so, are you proposing no doors on it, is that correct?
No, we would be proposing doors on the trash enclosure, yes.
And the doors would be out of the same material?
Yes. So, essentially, the appearance of, of the dog run, the area that encloses the generator and the outdoor air unit, all that stuff gets concealed in that fencing material. and the outdoor air unit, all that stuff gets concealed in that fencing material, and then immediately adjacent to that, you'd have the same thing that would enclose the trash enclosure.
This is Chris Draper. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there a reason that we can't have sort of a middle ground here, where you can still have this material covering a more structurally significant design?
Are you suggesting using a composite material cladding a, like masonry block wall?
I'm proposing that really, I mean, trash enclosure is an actual operable thing that is hanged around every single day by people who aren't always careful, and I'm, I'm not an architect, so I understand the argument for how it should look, but these things get bent up immediately, which is why I support staff's concept that needs to be more structurally significant. Is there another way to meet both our objectives of it looking like you want, but still meet the actual structural needs that staff, I think, is rightly identifying here? This is, this is, this is probably the only thing on site that really gets abused constantly. So, I think I understand their concerns.
Sure, I guess I would just suggest that we would utilize a solid steel frame to support the walls of the trash enclosure that would be filled with mortar and grout, reinforcing bar. We've designed trash enclosures like this in several other places using that method and have find them, have found them to be successful.
Is the cost of the trash enclosure an issue?
I don't believe so. Maybe perhaps the only cost issue would be future maintenance repairs on a masonry structure, as opposed to having to remove one board and replace it with a matching board?
Is it the color or the texture of the masonry that's proposed by the city that gives you heartburn?
I don't think it's either. I think it's...
Sorry?
I don't think it's either the color or the texture of the masonry that's being requested by the city. I think it's just our preference to use a composite material just because of what's adjacent to it.
You mean to match the rest of the building? Is that, is that the question?
Just to match the fencing that's right next to it, yeah.
Can you pull up the stone that we're recommending?
Well, I don't know that staff is recommending a specific material. We're just saying...
Oh, I thought we wanted it to match.
That it should be masonry, you know, masonry with the steel gates and whatever the masonry ends up. And I think actually, we would, I think we could sort through what Chris was suggesting, which is it's structurally masonry, but it has a, that product as a veneer for the body. I still, I have, even where we've supported this for like existing sites, we've still required the steel gates, even if the, the walls have been metal framing with the tracks boards. So, I, I mean, I think we can work, we don't have a, I guess where I'm heading with this is staff doesn't have a specific material we're saying to do here, other than the metal gate.
Yeah, that's our understanding as well.
I have a question.
I'm glad you agreed to a mandor, because it, it's one of my pet peeves, because the big doors are always open, if that's where employees are going through. So, utilizing the mandor is, I think, key to making it, keeping it look good. So, thank you. And because this seems to be what I asked, why do you have twice as much parking as needed? I mean, dogs don't drive, obviously, so...
It's a great point.
Yeah.
With this size facility, the city minimum parking amount is 17 parking spaces. However, with this size facility, just in order to staff the building, we need 25 spaces with the staff inside the building. Then you also have appointments that happen every 15 minutes, and I think there's six or seven exam rooms inside. So, you have a, thank you, a constant turning of clients in and out, as well as they have doggy daycare at this facility. So, there are high times in the morning and in the evening, dropping off, picking up dogs.
So, the expectation is that there will be 25 employees working at one time in this building?
There could be, yes, yeah.
So, the one item that we're supposed to be discussing is H, and it's a trash enclosure. And so, what I'm hearing from Jason is that staff, there is a potential that we could work something out from an administrative perspective, finding a compromise?
Well, I, the adminis, I, all I was saying is what Chris had suggested would actually comply with code, it'd be masonry walls. If you did steel gates, you could line outside of it with a different material. That would comply with code, you wouldn't need relief.
Yeah.
So, am I hearing that's possible, or what do we do?
Well, that would, well, no, I think Todd...
Yeah, I think Todd had a question or a comment.
So, the argument is that the trash enclosure should be a consistent material as the dog park fence?
That's our argument, yes.
How many materials are on the building?
I believe there's four or five, yeah.
So, this is the one place where there's consistency across something?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
We can build brick wall, they can build brick walls with composite gates, right?
No, I mean, I don't, I don't think you'd even, I mean, you would probably use just a standard C M block, you know, very rudimentary block, and you'd put it, line it with a, and then it'd be a steel gate. I think this steel gate's very important, probably more so than even the walls.
Yeah, I think we had one a couple months ago, and I think they were protesting the steel gate aspect, the thickness of it, so I think this is my first one about the brick wall.
There are no other questions for the applicant? Oh, is that something from Chris?
I think that's background.
Background noise.
Well, I was just...
Oh, go ahead.
I guess I was saying, yeah, to Justin's point, yes, there was a question with respect to the gauge of the metal, and I believe we were consistent with code because that gauge of that metal is significant in the structural integrity of it. And we don't want these things bent up all over the place, is my understanding of how we decided there.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we can move on.
Thank you.
If you can sign in over there, thank you. If there is anyone in the audience here to speak in favor of this item, you can come forward and speak in opposition to this item, or neutral.
That's fine.
Yeah, you can, you can speak in neutral, in a neutral stance. You can speak without in favor or opposed to it, if you'd like to say...
I'd like to be in favor.
Yeah, you can come forward, say your name and your address. And you have five minutes.
My name is Tom Akers. I live at 129 Marlow Parkway, and I own the apartment house straight east of this project you're talking about. And I don't know what you call that, building sitting so close out to the road, but that is, the blocks in my view of my building, it's right next door. Part of that property there in front, at one time when I built my apartment, 25 feet of that belonged to the City of Des Moines, I don't know if it still does or not, and, you know, but I know that city sold me the 25 feet they had, and I bought Jim Street, which Jim Street went just in front of my property, not in front of this property here. That stands for George Edward Morris that donated the street years ago to, to the City of Des Moines. The SSRP, it's outside of revitalization years ago, and it should be on the books. Zoning staff should know that tax abatement is allowed on this building five years if it meets a certain amount, percentage of masonry. We're trying to eliminate, we're trying to eliminate as much metal buildings as what we could, you know, during the time when we was working with the City of Des Moines on that. So, I'm sure that that tax abatement is still allowed today if that percentage is, you know, the masonry is used on it. I don't know if you guys talked to the city about that or not, but I do feel you're gonna, are you planning on having a sidewalk there on Lally, on the Lally side?
Yeah, they'll be required to provide sidewalk.
There will be a sidewalk up there on Lally, okay. And it appears to me that your, your driveway coming into the place is going to be about the same approach of mine property, or the apartment house next door. Is that about the same place, same area?
I think it's probably pretty close. I don't know if there's, I'm going to try to flip, see if there's a sheet that'd be good to jump to.
This is, there's an approach here coming in? I guess.
Right, yeah, that's the approach. We just, we're trying to look for a view that might show it in relation to the property needs.
With the driveway coming out of my place.
Right, yeah, I don't know that we have that on a sheet.
Can somebody, can somebody tell me that?
There we go.
Okay.
Can we switch?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Did somebody turn it off?
I guess my biggest concern is driving down Army Post Road.
I think it just got turned off. It takes a second. Oh, is it?
Oh, yeah.
You have it on?
Okay.
There you go.
My concern, my concern coming down Army Post Road, that my building sits back here, and you're not going to see it until you're down here someplace. Something in through here. You're not, you're not even going to be able to see my building because you've got storefronts here or whatever, except, I don't know why, you know, why that building's so far out, you know, to the street. I don't understand that. I'm for the economic development and I'm for the building. It looks like a nice building, but I do want to see masonry on it, too. About all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Can you sign in on this sheet over here on the table? Just sign your name and address on that sheet there. Thank you so much. Okay, did the applicant need a rebuttal? Any other further words? No? Okay. I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion.
I'll move staff.
Okay. Anyone, would anyone like to discuss the motion?
I would like to ask for a friendly amendment to have the applicant and the city staff work out some kind of possible compromise that would please the applicant in terms of the building materials.
Well, with, with the, the motion that's on the floor, we could, they can still lock, they could do a masonry structure and then do a veneer like was discussed earlier.
If that's the case, then, then I'll withdraw my friendly amendment suggestion.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, motion is to move staff. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Want me to do another round? I got a pair of...
All those, yeah. Chris, how do you vote?
Sorry, in favor.
Favor, thank you. Any opposed? Okay. All right. That was the last item on our public hearing. Do we have any committee or directors' reports?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a real gavel. Close the meeting, thank you.